Here we go. Good evening, welcome to the July 20th City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is call a meeting to order and we do have a quorum. Next item is to approve the minutes of the July, June 1st meeting, the Planning Commission. Any additions or corrections from the count, from the Planning Commission and/or the staff? Have to remember which meeting I'm in. All right. Hearing or seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is the Gateway Design Overlay District. I think Ms. Logan is going to lead us with that one.
Yes, sir, thank you. The first item before you tonight is a revision for site plan for Phase 1 of Fortress Personal Storage, initial design review, final design review and site plan for 29,900 square feet on 4.066 acres, zone PUD and GDO-1 located along Fortress Boulevard, A+ Storage Fortress at I-24 LP as the developer. This came before you several years ago, back in 2007, and you approved the site plan at that time. And a portion of it was completed, three of the buildings and the office section and the climatized structure was completed as part of Phase 1A. The property has since, and the project in its entirety, has since been purchased by a different developer, and this developer now wants to come through and complete the project. They have 11 other storage unit facilities throughout the Middletown, Tennessee area. They want to complete the project with a few minor revisions to the plan, but overall the plan will be substantially the same project that you reviewed and approved several years ago. The architecture will be the same. You will have the stone buildings that face Fortress Boulevard, that same facade will continue all the way across. And Lot 1C, if you look on your site plan, Lot 1C will still be in front of it, and that's still proposed for an office use. At this time, they're not proposing to build that building, but that area is still in front of it, so that will provide additional screening. In addition, when you approve the first site plan, you require that certain landscaping be installed across the front, so for that very reason for screening until Lot 1C was developed. They are proposing to screen that and continue the screening with the buffering on three sides of this project, a continuation again of your existing conditions of approval. The applicants are looking at trying to add a few RV and boat spaces to the property, they're still showing, taking a little of the landscaping out from Phase 1A over against the climatized structure. Staff doesn't necessarily have a problem with the one area of eight parking spaces, however, they've tried to squeeze in one space between a landscape island and a building, and we, they just showed it on the revised plans, and to us, that's just not a design that works. So, any conditions tonight, we would ask that that space in particular be removed, and we'll look at the other eight spaces. That just came in on our revisions that were submitted to you tonight, those were not on the original plans that staff reviewed, and we have asked the applicant that if you do approve this tonight, that they come back through with revised copies of the site plan tomorrow for staff to review next week during our staff review, just because of the modification to the plan that the rest of the staff has not had an opportunity to review. The main issue that we had during the review of this site plan related to emergency access and access for emergency vehicles. As you know, we have purchased different emergency vehicles in this year since 2007. Several new fire apparatus have been purchased by the City of Murfreesboro as we continue to expand our ISO 2 rated fire department. And it's very important that we be able to provide proper emergency access for our first responders, some of the best in the state of Tennessee, to this property. And we do think that they need to have access to all of the buildings, because even though they're storage buildings, there are materials that are flammable that are stored in these type of facilities. Therefore, they have attempted to show a revised plan before you tonight that they believe addresses all of our fire truck turning templates, however, that is a revision that came in just this afternoon to try to work with the staff on making sure that we have proper access. The first rendition that was reviewed by our fire department did not meet the requirements for our fire vehicles. This revision, engineer does believe, will meet the turning radius for that. We have come up with an alternate solution, that if we cannot make that work with our turning templates for our fire vehicles, that we would ask for them to install a temporary emergency access drive across 1C to connect into this lot until 1C is further developed. That way, we will always make sure that we have access for our emergency vehicles into the site. The engineer has stated that he does feel that that is an option that they would be willing to do if we can't make the option that they have presented to you tonight work. We just haven't, as a staff, had an opportunity to review the engineering and the design on that to make sure that it really is operational. So, we would ask tonight that you approve the site plan subject to the condition that staff have final review over the additional boat and RV spaces that were added, and that we also have an opportunity to review it for emergency access for our emergency vehicles, and if we have to add the temporary access drive, that we would be able to do that at a staff level. Other than that, we have no additional comments, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Logan, I have two.
Yes, sir.
What happens once 1C is developed and you no longer have this temporary drive?
We will require them to make it permanent as part of the development of 1C-
Okay.
...and provide a proper access easement.
Okay.
We'll have to always make sure that with the development of 1C, that we have access to that area for emergency vehicles, and because we have the same owners, we can accomplish that as part of this plan and prior to any permits being issued. Make sure we get proper access easements.
The other question, I'm just curiosity, looking at this, it looks like you're requiring sprinkler system? Are we requiring it in all buildings?
The fire department has stated that the buildings have to be sprinkled, and I think that it's any, for any buildings that are over a certain square footage-
Okay.
-and I think that the square footage of Building E probably meets the requirements. I'm not sure that the square footage of the buildings F and G meet those requirements.
Okay, so it's just a square footage?
It's based on the square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
What is that square footage? Do you know off the top of-
Not being a codes official, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to guess. I think Mr. Whitaker's here, and he could answer that question, or, but, I mean, I know that it'll be reviewed as part of our building permit review process, and our plans examiners will make sure that if it's required, that it'll be installed at that point.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Halliburton, you have another question?
I'm done.
All right. One question, will you be able to see boats and RVs from the outside of this?
With the, with the original plan that they presented that came in yesterday where it had not been on the first plan that staff reviewed, yes, you would have been able to do that. However, it was going to block our fire department access that we've worked so diligently to try to obtain, and they, so they've since removed those, so those will not be visible. If the parking spaces that are adjacent to the future Lot 1B are approved for boat and RV, then yes, they would be visible, and if you would like to add additional screening to those, that they're not visible from Fortress Boulevard, we could ask for that. However, staff really has an uncomfortableness with them removing landscaping to put these in, and they weren't part of the original plan, and we need to continue to work with the design engineer on that, make sure that we're not losing the landscaping, because it looks pretty nice if you look at it today, if you got there today. I mean, this is something that has to comply with GDO standards, and they have to provide their percentage of open space, both formal and informal. 20% of the site must have open space. 3% of the site must have formal open space. So, I think when they recalculate it, I'm not sure how much of that they'll be able to create, but we would ask that they work with staff to make sure we get proper screening of any of those, of any of those parking spaces for the boats and RVs from Fortress Boulevard.
Questions? All right. Vice Chairman, if there are no other questions or comment, I would move for approval subject to all staff comment, both written and oral, to include the supplemental review as stated tonight. Second, I'm going to- Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next items, plats and plans. Pocket Station Section 3, Phase 1, preliminary plat for 19 lots on 11.06 acres, zone PRD along, located along Victoria Drive, Pocket Station Partnership, developer. Ms. Logan. Oh, Ms. Ely? Okay.
Yes, thank you, her maps. And Ms. Ely's going to pull our maps up for us, but the, this property is a continuation of an existing single-family subdivision. Of course, we started in the last few months seeing more preliminary plots for some of our residential throughout Murfreesboro. I hope that's a good sign of what we have to come, especially with our existing subdivisions. This is for 19 lots and two phases, and this is the preliminary plat. I think they're ready to move with, with one phase of this, that's going to probably include eight or nine lots, so it won't be too long before you'll be seeing a final plat on that portion. And one of the things I wanted to note to you, that overall, the preliminary plat is in good order, and they've addressed the majority of staff comments. However, the plans that are on the, I wanted to point out that are at home, and it's shown on the preliminary plat sheet, is the eyebrow or the elbow, I think it's the next one down. Okay, that was the original design that was submitted, right there, and if you can see, I call it an elbow, where the lots are coming through, and it's really to try to provide an area so that they can get proper frontage for a couple of additional lots. That's a design that we see quite frequently in subdivisions, however, we like more of what I would term an eyebrow, an area that's a little more shallow and it's not so deep, because that's kind of a modified cul-de-sac that they've shown there. And while it looks like it would function fine, in actuality, that's a very hard turning movement for our service delivery vehicles to make, and again, our emergency access vehicles, our emergency responder vehicles. Most importantly, what we're looking at is our service delivery for trash, et cetera, something that we've really been focusing on, and that was just what we felt just wasn't really going to function well. So, they have come back on the plans that you had before you tonight and modified it to a shallower area, and we've looked at it, they've taken quite a bit of that radius off, so that it's much more easy, or much easier for our vehicle to kind of maneuver that curve, it'll just be, it'll kind of roll, and it should work well for our service delivery vehicles. So, that is a modification that I wanted to let you know about. Other than that, the plat is in good order.
Any questions? Comments?
If there are none, I make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item, new business. Greetings, Ms. Ely. Next item is zoning application, approximately 5.9 acres from CL to CH south of State Route 99, New Salem Highway, approximately 52 acres from RZ, approximately 7.5 acres, and RS-10 approximately 44 acres to RM-16, approximately 24 acres from RS-10 to CH north of State Route 99, New Salem Highway, World Outreach Church of Murfreesboro, applicant. Now, good evening, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Chairman Young and Planning Commission members. Our first item of new business is to consider some rezoning for approximately 83 acres located along Highway 99 or New Salem Highway, owned by the World Outreach Church. And the map that's on the screen and also in your agenda packet shows four different color, colors on the map, and those are, divides the request basically into four parts, and it was described by Chairman Young in the description. The, and we'll just focus first, the property is both on the north side and the south side of Highway 99, and the parcel that's on the south side is actually on the corner of Barfield Road and New Salem Highway, and that's identified, or the World Outreach Church uses that as a leadership park. It's currently zoned CL, which is local commercial district, and it was zoned CL when it was annexed into the city, so that was an interim zoning. The, when I drove by the site, there was leadership park on the building, so I suppose the church uses it as part of their leadership training, but you may be familiar with that structure from driving down New Salem Highway. They're requesting that you rezone that 5.9 acres located along the southern side of New Salem Highway from CL to CH, Highway Commercial District. Those are both commercial-type districts, but the CH district allows a broader variety of commercial uses than the CL district does. They've also requested that the property that they own along the northern side of New Salem Highway be rezoned. Now, some of that property on the northern side of New Salem is zoned RZ, which is for Zero Lot Line Residential District, and RS-10, which is Single Family Residential District. And you can see that the, I guess, is that, the green area is the part which they're requesting to be changed from Single Family Residential District to CH, Highway Commercial District. Then there are the, that's not, I don't know how that's on the, that's not what we should be looking at. Okay, yeah, now we're back on the right exhibit on the television. The orange area and the blue area are both zoned RZ and RS-10, and they're requesting that they both be rezoned to RM-16, and that's Multi-Family Residential District. And the, you will see from another exhibit in your packets that the property on the northern side of Highway 99, it does have a significant portion of the properties in the FEMA flood, flood plain and floodway, so there will be some restrictions on future development of the areas that are located within those flood, floodway areas. They'll also have to meet our water quality protection ordinance for any future development. It's contemplated that development on both the area requested for RM-16 and CH will be from New Salem Highway with no connection to the adjacent subdivision, although the property does have access to Stony Meadow Drive. But staff would expect to limit the access that any type of commercial development would have, or multifamily development would have, to using just that of New Salem Highway. The applicants would like to hold a neighborhood meeting for this request to give folks who live within the area an opportunity to come to the church next Tuesday and see what they're requesting. They haven't identified with me any type of user they have in mind, they haven't told me of any plans they have, but I know that they're representatives of the application here tonight, but at this time, really, you're just considering scheduling this item for a public hearing, so you may want to hear the presentation the night of the public hearing. But I did want to point out that they wanted to hold a neighborhood meeting next Tuesday at their church to get the word out. If you have any questions about this application, I'll be glad to answer them, otherwise, you should go ahead and schedule for a public hearing. We don't have anything scheduled on August 3rd, so if you think that's an appropriate date, then that would be an appropriate motion.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. No, I mean, we set the public hearing on 3. Second. Have a motion second, set a public hearing August 3rd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item B, annexation request for approximately 0.10 acres located at the intersection of Barfield Road and State Route 99, New Salem, Pinnacle Bank, applicant. Ms. Ely.
Okay. And our second item of new business is to consider an annexation request for a very small portion of property, and if you take your attention to the maps that you have, you can see the little triangle, that shaded blue. That triangle is currently in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. This green line shows the Murfreesboro city limits. At some time, this parcel was created, although staff believes it was created illegally, because we never saw the subdivision plat, of course, you never saw subdivision plat, but it was under the owners, the former owners subdivided it, but at this time, the bank owns the property. The bank would like for the entire parcel to be within one jurisdiction, so that rather than requiring Rutherford County to review the plans and City of Murfreesboro, it would just be more efficient to have one, when government reviewing it. So, they're asking for this entire parcel to be within Murfreesboro city limits. So, what that means is they just want this little 0.1 acre, tenth of an acre parcel to be annexed into the city. It continues with current city limits, it's within our urban growth boundary. I've started researching the property, and I don't foresee any problems with annexing this property, but I am preparing a plan of services, and if you would like to schedule a public hearing for this annexation request, we would be ready on August 3rd.
Vice Chairman Young, I would need to abstain from any discussion or vote with respects to this application due to my affiliation with Pinnacle Bank.
So noted. So, we're not really sure where this little remnant came from, but that's not important.
Oh, we're sure where it came from.
Okay.
We're just not sure how it got there, because it didn't, it didn't. We, it did not come through our institution, and the, but the current owner is aware of that situation. The current owner didn't cause it directly by themselves, perhaps indirectly, but directly. They're aware that they're going to have to fix it before they'll ever get any kind of building permit, and this is part of the ultimate fix.
Okay, all right, I understand. Do we have a motion? Okay, it's not, recommend that we set a public hearing for August 3rd. All right. Second. Have a motion and a second, set a public hearing August 3rd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
One abstention.
And one abstention, Mr. Halliburton. Next item, annexation request, excuse me, zoning application to rezone approximately 1.9 acres from RS-15 to Commercial Highway and to zone approximately 0.10 acres simultaneously with the annexation located southeast of the intersection of Barfield Road and State Route 99, Pinnacle Bank, applicant. This is the same parcel we just looked at a second ago.
It's larger, though.
In total?
That's right.
All right.
This rezoning request will be, will consist of two parts. They're requesting that the portion of the parcel that's already within Murfreesboro city limits and already zoned RS-15, which is Single Family Residential District, be rezoned to CH, Highway Commercial District. They're also requesting that the little parcel that, that we're going to study for annexation, if annexed, it come into the city with a CH zoning, so we refer to that as zoned CH simultaneous with annexation, so that the entire parcel will be within the city limits and the entire parcel will be zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. The orange area is about 0.9 acres, the little blue triangle is about 0.1 acres, so, well, it's, I'm sorry, the large, the orange area is 1.9 acres, and then the blue area is 0.9, so it's about a two-acre parcel. And of course, it's near the first agenda item, or the first item of new business, where the World Outreach Church has some property on the north and south side of Salem Highway that they want to have rezoned. So, although the property just across Barfield Road is zoned CL, there is an application pending, and it'll, the public hearing you've scheduled for August 3rd to consider zoning that CH. And the properties across New Salem Highway currently zoned RS-10, and there's that pending application to, requesting to rezone it from to CH and to RM-16, so those two zones are, they are what they are now, but you know that there's an application pending. But just further to the west, beyond the CL property, there's some properties zoned RS-15, and I think that's where the World Outreach Church proper is, and they've got a special use permit to have that place of worship there. And as I mentioned before, to the south and to the east, the properties are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. And then just across the river, there's an area that's no longer zoned PCD, but is zoned Commercial Highway, and it was rezoned earlier this year. The applicants would like for you to consider rezoning this entire parcel to CH, although we stated two different ways, to rezone property from RS-15 to CH and to zone property CH simultaneous with the annexation, it would effectively diszone this one parcel to CH. It would be appropriate to have that public hearing after the annexation public hearing, which you've scheduled on August 3rd, and if you, if you'd like to make that motion, I think that staff would be in favor of that. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. I haven't been, nobody's talked to me about any future development plans, so I know the first question I usually get from the public is, what do they want to put there? Well, I don't know, but I know they want it to be zoned Commercial Highway District.
To market. Would you care for me, and get me a map of a little larger of the area for the public hearings?
Sure, I will.
I want to see where, how all this ties in together. Any questions?
Vice Chairman Young, again, I will need to abstain from any discussion or vote on this matter due to my affiliation with Pinnacle Bank.
So noted.
Chairman Young, I'd like to add something. I want to direct your attention to the map, and as you view the map, you will notice that the Barfield Road borders this property on the west side. You will notice also that Barfield Road on the side adjacent to this parcel, the, this would be the western boundary of this parcel, is straight, but on the other side of Barfield Road, there is a curve. And what happened is several years ago, actually, years ago, Barfield Road used to come in at a very, much of a skew. Then along the way, the city reconstructed that portion of the road, moving it slight, the intersection slightly to the west, and then a little bit of a curve, so it would align properly with Highway 99. When we did that, the, there was a little bit of excess right-of-way. Now, what I'm wanting to explain to you is that some maps incorrectly show that that right-of-way that was excess is part of the Pinnacle property. It is not. As best as I can tell, that property is still right-of-way owned by the City of Murfreesboro, and this map that you're looking at is correct. But what I want to caution you about is that some maps that have been published incorrectly show it as being part of this parcel. At some point in the future, I expect that the owners will approach the city and ask for us to abandon the right-of-way, and we may do that. In the past, we had discussions with the former owners about that, but they never followed through with what we felt needed. There are some very significant utilities, there's a telephone line, possibly some electric lines, some wire lines and such in that. And when development happens on this property, we'll probably see someone approach the city about purchasing this excess right-of-way, and maybe willing to relocate utilities. But I'm just wanting to help clarify, if you see a map that is different than what you see on the, before you, and is on the screen, be aware, it is probably incorrect. And if you are confused, please ask questions, we don't want you there to be in confusion.
That's why I want you to have a correct map for us of the next, a larger.
Right. Well, this map is correct, and we'll have a map that shows both this property and the World Outreach property for, actually, the World Outreach illustration shows this property as well, but didn't, didn't show it in perspective. It shows it as part of the additional information on, but we'll have one that shows them combined. And we'll probably take that to the neighborhood meeting so that they know what's going on as well.
Before I leave, sir. We're ready for a motion.
Maybe we set a public hearing August 3rd.
Second.
Have a motion second, set a public hearing August 3rd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. With one abstention, Mr. Halliburton. Have a motion and second, set a public hearing August 3rd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. With one abstention, Mr. Halliburton. Next item is proposed amendments to the sign ordinance regarding the BZA procedures and tenant signs for end and corner tenants, City of Murfreesboro, Applica. Ms. Ealy, how are you tonight?
Great. Thanks, Chairman Young, members of Planning Commission. The building and code staff proposes to amend some provisions of the current sign ordinance pertaining to BZA timeframes on, the time limits on filing for a BZA application, and also for the timeframe to appeal be, to be heard by the BZA. The first item pertains to time limit of 10 days from the time an applicant has been denied a permit to be able to file for a appeal to the BZA. The current zoning ordinance allows for 15 days. We would like to mirror the zoning ordinance within the sign ordinance to allow for 15 days for the applicants to be able to file an appeal. The second provision is a timeframe allowed for an appeal to be heard by the BZA. Currently, the sign ordinance states that the appeal will be heard at the next meeting following 45 days after an appeal is applied. This gets confusing for the applicant. The zoning ordinance simply states not more than 45 days after an appeal is applied for. So to reduce confusion and consistency purposes, staff would like to make this provision change in this sign ordinance amendment. The third item would cover corner and end tenants, multi-tenants, separate outside entrance buildings. If you'll remember back in December, we passed an ordinance that would allow these tenants in PD zones and overlay districts to be allowed to have two signs if they were on a corner or an end unit. We're requesting that we be allowed to have the ordinance amended to allow this to happen in all zones without, without the City of Murfreesboro, just to bring consistency with that as well. Staff has requested that these items be considered for public hearing. I guess August the 3rd would be the date considered, and staff is available to answer questions.
So some of this could be considered housekeeping, you're bringing the.
Yes, sir.
I hate to use that term, but.
As we are currently going.
You're bringing consistency into it.
As we're going through the ordinance, trying to realign some of the ordinance and straighten things out, sometimes we see things that need to be corrected immediately, or as quickly as possible, so we're bringing these before you as we see them before we bring the big ordinance change to you.
Any questions? I guess a motion would be in order, set a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing on August the 3rd.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion passes. All right. Yeah, I know, I did it again. Let the record show that my vote was a yes. When I said no, it was to make sure that there was no, no votes. I've done this before, and I apologize.
I'm not trying to pick on you.
I understand, you're correct, you're right. Next item is an annexation request for approximately 12.4 acres located at Epps Mill Road and Forbus Drive, Love Travels Stop and Country Stores Applica. Ms. Ealy.
Thank you, Chairman Young. This next item is an annexation request for property that's approximately 12.4 acres, that's located along Forbus Drive, just north of Love's Truck Stop, and the property is shown in the orange color on the map, on the screen and in your packets. The surrounding properties are all within the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and Interstate 24 runs along the western side of the property. The adjacent property owners, Love's Travel Stops and Country Store is currently served by the City of Murfreesboro as an outside-the-city sewer customer. Love's wishes to expand their site and to utilize sewer within this expanded area, which is the area shaded orange, the 12.4 acres. The subject property is not within Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary, and it's also not contiguous with current city limits, therefore cannot effectively be annexed by the City of Murfreesboro. And as we know, sanitary sewer is only available to customers who are Murfreesboro residents or are approved by Planning Commission and City Council as outside-the-city sewer customers. And so that's basically the option before you this evening. You can make a motion to serve this property as an outside-the-city sewer customer, or make a motion not to serve it. Of course, that would be your decision, deferral is always not, but no public hearing is required either way, and then your recommendation will be taken to City Council by our planning directors. So if you have any questions at this time, I'll be glad to answer them or misread a lot. Otherwise, it would be appropriate for you to make a motion on pertaining to serving them as an outside-the-city sewer customer.
Any questions?
Is that what the request is?
It is.
Service.
And if we do approve them as outside-the-city sewer customer because we can't annex them, they can't oppose annexation in the future, so if the urban growth boundary were to ever be modified, and they were to be, the property was to be contiguous with current city limits, the property owners or whoever it is at the time cannot oppose annexation at that time.
Additionally, they have to develop this under city standard as opposed to just simply county standard by making this request if we approve the request.
That's right, any subdivision plaits and site plans will become before the Planning Commission, the Rutherford County Planning Commission and the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission, so they'll have to meet both standards. Typically, ours are a little bit more restrictive, and so if they meet our standards, it's usually not a problem for them to meet Rutherford County's, but they will have to go through both review processes, and you'll get an opportunity to look at it, so will Ms. Logan.
Maybe we approve them as an outside-the-city customer?
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is staff reports and other businesses. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir, thank you. The other item under other business tonight is for the Bojangles site plan for 3,500 square feet on one acre, Zoned Commercial Highway, located at the corner of Memorial Boulevard and Irongate Boulevard. Marreal Estate LLC is the developer. And thank you for putting the exhibit up, this is important. Just to let the people at home know that on your last meeting of June 15th, 2011, you approved a site plan for Bojangles to be located on a one-acre parcel at the Outlet, located in front of the U.S. Post Office at the corner of Irongate Boulevard and Memorial Boulevard. And just so the people at home are aware, this project will look very similar in the design and the aesthetic as the Bojangles that currently exist on South Church Street. It will be an all brick constructed building with the same type of finishes and details that are on that, that building. It will not be their standard prototype, typical EFS building. So the overall site plan was in good order, however, during that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the need for a right turn lane. The staff had requested that at the access drive, that will be on that plan, the southern access drive off of Memorial Boulevard, that a right turn lane or a deceleration lane be added because of what we feel will be the impact to the operational, operational design and how Memorial Boulevard functions, that it will be impacted by this development. The developer of that, of the restaurant disagreed with that opinion and stated that he really felt that his development and his restaurant would not have the kind of impact on Memorial Boulevard and on that turn movement that we were, that the staff had predicted. So therefore, we kind of were at an impasse, and the Planning Commission deemed that there was probably some validity to both sides of the, of the situation, and asked that the staff and the developer meet and work out a compromise. And we have an agreement that we have formulated that is before you tonight, and I will go through that with you, and then at the end, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and also, we would ask that if you do so agree, that you also make this as a subjected, as an additional condition of approval to your original approval for the site plan. The first thing that we're going to look at is we're going to look at that the vehicles per hour lane volume on Memorial Boulevard, that the post-construction traffic, which means after the Bojangles is actually constructed, that no more than 15 cars per hour making a right turn movement into the southern post office entrance would be happening. If there's more than 15 on a consistent basis per hour, 15 right turn movements into the drive per hour, that's the kind of the magic number that we're going to be looking at as to whether a right turn lane is needed. A right turn lane will be required if that's what we'd, what we find. The right turn lane would have a dimensions of a 50-foot of storage and then a 125-feet of taper, and the taper is your transition to enter into the turn lane. The construction plans for the turn lane would have to be approved by the City Engineering Department, as well as the Tennessee Department of Transportation because Memorial Boulevard is a state highway. The time period for the post-construction traffic count is to be six months after the final certificate of occupancy. Mr. Kathy, when he met with us, the developer, and who, the man who owns the Bojangles, is predicting that he would like to have his restaurant open December 1st of this year, which is a pretty aggressive, that's a pretty fast construction time schedule. If that would occur, staff had a concern that if we did it six months from the time of the opening, or the time of his opening, that we would be looking at right at when school gets out. And as we know, school traffic does play a large part of what we should be looking at. I mean, a lot of times when we look at traffic studies over by MTSU, we always want to make sure that the traffic studies are not performed on the days when students are not in session. So what we determined was that if, if the six-month time period occurred when school was out of session, we would wait until September, when both the elementary, high school, middle schools, and the university were back in session to do the traffic count. However, if the project is very quick on construction and it, and it does complete and open, and we, and it's open for six months by March or April of next year, we would go ahead at the six-month timeframe and look at that, and look at, do the traffic counts. So that six-month window is the magic number, however, if it's done when school is out of session, then we would push it to September, when both schools were in session. The counts will be conducted from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We chose these numbers, these timeframes for two reasons. One, these were the times that the original traffic counts were done by the design engineer when he looked at this and stated that there was not a need for a right turn lane. So we want to make sure we're mimicking the same time periods. In addition, these also happen to be the busiest hours of operation for the Bojangles business, because they're having the breakfast rush, the lunch rush, and then the early dinner evening rush. And so those were, those seem to be what we felt were reasonable timeframes to look at the traffic counts. Finally, in order to ensure construction of the right turn lane, staff would request that a surety of some sort be posted prior to the issuance of a building permit, be held by the City Engineering Department, and it will be in an amount to be determined by the SEC's engineer. But they'll look at the overall cost of what this will cost, if they have to go back in and put it in, and install it, and then that will be confirmed by city engineering staff. And those were the four things that we agreed upon. I think we've got the times that we're looking for, I think we've got a timeframe established for when we should do the traffic counts. Mr. Kathy felt that was really a time that would allow his business to get up in operational and get over what he termed the honeymoon period. And then also, it gave a number that staff looked to work with the design engineer on establishing as to something that we could quantify, the numbers of turn movements that we were going to be looking for in order to determine if this right turn lane was needed. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have, and just wanted to outline that for you tonight.
One question.
Yes, sir.
If, if the traffic counts determine that a lane is appropriate.
Yes, sir.
What would be the disruption in the timeframe of actually getting that construction?
They would have to go back in and construct it. It shouldn't take that long to construct it. I'm thinking that it could easily be accomplished within a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty quick.
Just moving it over.
They got to mobilize, I mean, it will, because there's a lot of, there's already quite a bit of pavement that's there, edge of pavement that they can utilize, and once they, you know, they have a design, it shouldn't, I mean, our contractors move pretty quick around this area, I've found, with asphalt, and so I think that it can be constructed pretty quickly.
Vice Chairman Young, I would just like to make a comment. I think this is a great compromise. I think it works both from a safety standpoint and trying to figure out if this is the right thing to do, but also at the same time, trying to see if we can work with the applicant and if truly his, his business is going to impact Memorial Boulevard and traffic on Memorial Boulevard.
Thank you.
So I would applaud this compromise.
Thank you.
And with that, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Are there any other staff reports or other business tonight?
Yes, sir, we have a short one. Mr. Lewis is going to provide you a report on Public Chapter 862 about education for Planning Commission staff members.
Welcome, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman Young and staff and Planning Commission members. I'm here today, tonight, to remind you of our constant Public Chapter 862 commitment, and every year about this time, we try to find out how many hours all the board members and staff members are needing to obtain before the end of the year. I gave you a handout earlier before the meeting, and it shows the number of hours that each one of you have. In addition, I also included a schedule of meetings that we have on a monthly basis in the legal department here at City Hall. They, they come around noon every, the first Tuesday of every month, and it's, it's a good time for the city to get some training for board members and staff members due to the budget constraints that we've been seeing the past couple of years. We serve lunch, and we have a telephone conference, and they have some pretty good topics every month, and like I said, this, I explained to some of you that I may have made some errors in some of the calculations that I made with the totals I had, so if you could come to me later, give me a phone call or email, we'll work on this and get the correct hours. But just take a look at that and see if those hours are fine for you, and just contact me, let me know what you want to do. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly, if any of you all have professional training that could qualify towards your Public Chapter 862 required training, please consult Mr. Lewis. It may be something that could dovetail, so you could apply one to the other as well. If yes, we want you to take credit for it.
Any other business?
No, sir.
Seeing no other business, we are adjourned.